Agenda, there's many items on here pertaining to up and coming days of needs. So, Lord, I ask special guidance for Commissioner's Court to deal with these agenda items, and I pray that they will have favor with you in everything they do regarding this agenda. Lord, we want to give you thanks for the approximately week from today opening of the Social Service Building at Brownie Park. We want to thank the BISD leadership of particularly Adult Education in bringing GED and English as a Second Language classes to this center, free of charge to the people, not only in that area, but all over Cameron County. Lord, we thank you for the volunteers that are going to be giving the diet and meal preparation classes in our kitchen, and we thank you for the teachers and the counselors which will be provided by BISD and the college. Lord, we thank you again for everything that's happening here in Cameron County. I know tomorrow night there's an opening of a new hotel, Courtyard by Marriott chain, and I know that there's other businesses opening, and I know that our economy is expanding. So, Lord, we thank you for the prosperity in Cameron County. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
If you would join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has anyone turned in any public comment sheets?
I saw them, sorry.
Thank you, sir. We have one so far. I know that there's somebody else signing up in the back.
Good morning. Mr. Valdemi is not here. I hope he's doing good as far as his health. Mr. Wood, Mr. Judge, my acquaintance, Mr. Garza, Ms. Mayo, and my fellow Americans. I'm hoping that this body of decision-makers won't keep burdening us taxpayers with more unwarranted taxes. According to the Brownsville Herald, from eighteen to twenty thousand homeowners protested at the appraisal district in San Benito because of their scrupulous high home evaluations. I did too. There being a low wage, this being a low-wage area, how can many of these low-wage earners keep up with their home mortgages payments, car payments, utilities, phone bills? They can't. Even the governor yesterday was asking for a fund to help the so-called poor who can't meet their electrical rates increases. The big losers are always the hard frugal middle-class worker. He doesn't make a lot of money yet. He is not so poor as to qualify for the Lone Star and Section Eight housing and so forth. The rich can afford it, and the poor gets government taxpayers' money. The middle class gets stuck with the bills without any outside help. Every county agency head wanted a large increase in their budgets, plus salary increases for themselves. There is a large increase in home building, large supermarket chains are appearing in their malls, thus her county coffers should be overflowing with money. Where it is? I don't know. Though you all have frozen our taxpayers for the seniors, there are many who fell through the cracks that have paid taxes for almost forty-plus years and have not reached sixty-five and over yet. Learn to live within your means and approach any future expense as if it was your own personal money, not taxpayers' money. Everybody knows that more money there is at your disposal, the more you spend. Be frugal. Question deeply all money requests. Ask if it's really needed or it's just one more wanted need just because it's new in the market. I was once in charge of a budget many years ago in the U.S. Department of Education. My colleagues were always asking for more money, salary increases. We were told in Washington under the Reagan administration that increases were only to be given to those employees who devised some kind of method to save money, those who cut costs yet produced more, and only those who could walk on water. Can your employees in this courthouse walk on water? If not, races should be on merit. Thank you for freezing our taxes for the senior citizens, but I'm also looking out for the rest that are not in that category. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have Jack Mahur. This is all new to me, so I'd be twenty please to go if I could. We're, uh, got a small group here just protested and in fact that y'all disregard the welfare of all these people who live on this road. Been there many years, some of them, just a few years, but without any regards of our well-being as taxpayers, as voters. We got roughly, I don't know, one hundred and sixty names there, maybe more, and feel like y'all have no regards to our welfare, our meanings. So devastating that we just change whenever y'all feel like you want to change the road. I thought we'd be on the agenda on this deal. We didn't make it. I can still get hundreds and thousands more names. Everybody signed this petition, was more than glad to do it, and felt it was wrong. It's a very expensive cost to Cameron County taxpayers on your court reporters, all the paperwork y'all got to go through, the EMS, fire departments, police department, all got to be changed. We've been shared twenty-eight for so long. I was told yesterday by a friend of mine that back in the eighties, I thought it was the nineties, it was Nester Road before then. I don't know why y'all keep changing. And I understand it's dedicated to some police officer someplace, and nobody on that road even knows who it is. Never heard of it. And we have some very prominent people on that road putting their name if they wanted to, but personally, nobody wants to change. They want to stay as is, and we're requesting, please, keep it shared twenty-eight, get rid of the southern name, put it in a subdivision somewhere or some other road that's being newly built that don't have close to three hundred people on it or better, they have to change all their addresses. We have a lot of cases, like one gentleman was there applying, been there for fourteen years, applied for a loan. They show recording, we just changed our mailbox about two years ago to this EMS number that we had to have, which we had to go through. It's a three-oh, two-five-digit number for EMS and all that police records, and the bank said, "You only lived there two years, you can't do it." Said, "I've been there fourteen." He had to prove that he was there fourteen years. That's just one instant change address. My wife's aunt willed her some money years ago, made a will. She died about four months ago. It had to go through the relatives in Harlingen to find her because it was Nester Road back then. We've already changed two box numbers since then. I have another gentleman down the road just come in, graduated from Wall Street, went to Florida, spent nineteen years over there, married, kids, come back, moved in on shared twenty-eight with his parents, worked down here. And I showed him this petition, he said, "I just have my driver's license, change to shared twenty-eight." And I said, "Well, this doesn't pass, get ready to change it again." And everybody just thoroughly discussed it, acknowledged it. So many people have to go through so much hardship to get everything changed and all their records. I just don't understand why somebody would do this, and nobody knows this policeman. I did find somebody knows a lady, she's supposed to work at the Cotton Gin in Bayview area. That gin's been down for twenty years. Mr. Martin ran that gin, I knew him. In fact, he graded my road back when I moved in there thirty-two years ago. But I just don't understand. I volunteered in the county for quite a few years, did everything sheriff's reserve, started a fire department in nineteen seventy-one. Had called up thirty-two names, got thirty-three people to show up. We started a fire department, kept my living room in my living room, about seventy-one. Went after a fire truck and finally got enough money to go to New York, drove home the first American Friends Fire Truck. And, you know, I've done a lot, sheriff's reserve, seven years. And everybody just walks over you like you're dirt. Just let you know, we don't appreciate it. I do have a few people here who need to get more petitions, I don't know. I don't know how we could do it, but I wish y'all would consider, and thank you.
By the way, that lady that it was named after was a mayor of Williston, and her husband was a city commissioner. Okay, presentation of the court order signed by the -- is there any other public comments?
Just so they understand, you can't take eye on that comment.
Presentation of the court order signed by the District Judges of Cameron County, setting the salaries of the court reporters in accordance with Article 152.905 of the Vernon Civil Stat典 Local Law Recode at meeting set on November ninth, two thousand and five recessed and reconvene November twenty-ninth, two thousand and five, in the Hundred Seventh District Court.
District Courts, District Judges of Cameron County met on November ninth at recessed their meeting on the twenty-ninth. They were in a heated discussion on what court reporter should make. They determined what they were to make on November twenty-ninth. After the court order was signed and delivered to the District Clerk, I forwarded a copy to the budget officer at that time. Two months ago, I noticed that the increases had not been implemented through a salary schedule, and so to make this official, we are presenting it to the Commissioner's Court. In the past, we had not done that, but we needed to notify the Commissioner's Court to provide funding for this. I don't entertain any questions.
What was it raised to?
Actually, what happened was in the reconfiguration of the Cameron-Willessy Judicial District, six of the eight court reporters lost salary that was supplemented from Willissey County. Last year, we received four percent, and their salaries were set at seventy-eight, six-twenty-seven originally at October first. The judges realized that the court reporters were making less money than they had the year before, in fact, a significant amount, and so they agreed.
Mark, was that loss in salary, a loss in salary, or was it like a?
A loss in their total salary.
Car allowance?
No, this was actual salary.
Yeah, but they were given that salary because they were having to go over there, right?
No.
Or they could go?
No, Willissey County provided auto reimbursements, I understand, for them. They didn't get a salary, they didn't get an auto allowance. This was salary that was paid because they were part of a two-county district. Now they're part of a one-county district, or one county, and so they lost four thousand and seventy-seven dollars.
So you're saying they didn't go over there to, as court reporters, to handle courts in Willissey County?
Right.
They did not go over there?
They do not go over, six of the eight do not go.
But what they lost, why were they being paid? Why were they being paid prior to them, prior to the change of Willissey County's structure?
Right.
Were they going over there?
Yes.
As needed, I'm assuming?
Right, a part of their time was spent in a rotation of district judges. There were six district judges that rotated a week each.
So they were physically going over there during court reporting?
And the four thousand dollar salary was not an auto allowance, it was salary.
That was a salary from Willissey County because they were over there on a rotation basis.
A portion of the salary.
But what uses it to discuss it if, I mean, we don't have any discretion on this. They order it. It's their order, and they can do it, and we're, nothing we can do about it.
They're just really informing us and making sure that we document it.
We budget for it.
Yeah.
We wanted to make sure that there was an official notification, and when I provided this to the budget officer, he said, "Well, there's no money for that." But that was back in the first of December, end of November, and so it had not been implemented.
That's when budgets had already been established and everything, because what we're talking about is about four thousand per employee addition.
Well, over a ten-month period, so it's roughly equivalent to twenty-two thousand dollars.
Well, okay, Mark.
But why a ten-month period?
It was approved, uh, it was approved on November twenty. Actually, it could go back to November ninth, when the original meeting was set.
But I thought, from what I was told, and correct me if I'm wrong, I was told that they can only, the district judges can only order a, an increase on salaries if the increase occurs prior to the setting of the budget. I thought, what I thought this order was about was prospective as of October one, they were asking for the new salary schedule.
The oh-seven.
Yeah, but what you're telling me is that you're, that they, that we, we're going retroactive, and they're going to get a lump sum payment for those ten months.
Judge, may I address that? You cannot legally do that. You can't go retroactive. The AG's already issued an opinion.
I'm not sure this is a retroactive payment.
The Attorney General has ruled that under this section, that the, because of the constitutional provision, you can't, it does require, even though it's, the court only has very limited, the Commissioners Court only has very limited discretion on adopting or not adopting the order, the AG has still ruled that the order as passed by the district judge is effective from and after the date it is adopted by the Commissioners Court, and you can't go retroactive past that. So if today's the date they adopt it, this would be the earliest it could be effective.
I'll inform the district judges of that rule.
Okay.
It's not a rule, it's, well, it's his ruling.
It's, uh, AG opinion.
It's AG.
In the past, what the procedure is?
And let me tell you the reason I'm telling you this, because I understood in my conversations with the district judges that they had passed the order, but they had understood that we couldn't do anything about it until this prospective year, this new fiscal year that was coming up. So I thought that the issue was dead because it never came up, nobody ever asked us to put it on the agenda because of the fact that it was adopted after the time that the budget was set in the two thousand and five, two thousand and six budget. And so I just assumed that they would come back and try to adopt it effective October one under the new fiscal year, two thousand and six, two thousand and seven year. And so I forgot, we didn't deal with it anymore. Nobody asked to place it on the agenda. So when I saw that here today, I assumed that what the district judges were asking for was an order, were confirmation of an order prospectively from October one, two thousand and six, to September thirtieth, two thousand and seven, and that's where I thought we were coming from until right now when you told me otherwise.
The judge, precisely what the, that's the issue that was being addressed by the AG, is if the, if the order of the district court adjusting the salaries occurs after the budget is fixed and requires a budget amendment, then the precise wording with the AG said is that therefore the order is effective only upon the adoption of the Commissioners Court of the necessary budget amendments. So since payment of this will require a budget amendment, it becomes effective upon your order adopting the budget amendment. You don't have discretion in doing it, but you have, but that's when it becomes effective.
So, so we don't have a budget amendment before us?
I don't know.
Mr. Javier?
Then that was the issue brought earlier this year to the budget officer, so I had taken it to Javier and asked that you need to put this on as a salary schedule and a budget amendment to follow.
But the question I have, though, is, is the order that will be adopted when, I'm sorry, let's say we, we, there's no order for adoption either here today, that I understand.
It doesn't get funded, yes.
Well, no, there's two issues here, or more than that. What this is a presentation, there's no action on this.
Right. It's just a presentation, that's how it's listed.
So do we have to have an order adopting the order of the district judges and then a budget amendment?
No, sir, just a budget amendment, once you pass a budget amendment authorizing the payment, then it's effective from and after that date.
And the second question I have is, is the, is the order, when we adopt the order or when we do the budget amendment, is the budget amendment for a salary that is going to be paid on a monthly basis, or is the budget amendment an order for the whole amount that was ordered in November?
No, it can't be, it can't be paid retroactive. It's got to be based on a salary.
Whatever salary.
That's the basis of the AG's opinion. They said that, see, the same issue was there, was the, is that the amendment by the district judges occurred, or the order occurred after the budget was already fixed, and so the AG was asked, can that, can we amend the budget once the budget's already in place to comply with what the request of the district court? And the answer was, yes, you can, of course, it's got to be funds available, but yes, you can. And then the next, they went ahead and stated, however, that you can't make it retroactive because of Article Three, Section Fifty-three of the Constitution. So that, so that you've got, it's got to be, I mean, this is an annual salary that's paid out on a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day basis. So you can only pay from and after the time the budget, that the Commissioners Court adopts a budget amendment. So it would only be for that part, I mean, just you'd make a salary and pay that part thereafter, after the budget is adopted, amendment is adopted.
In theory, the district judges can't pass an order that puts the county's budget in a deficit position.
Okay.
Mark, I have a question, and of course, they're the ones making the decisions, but on slots, you have this documentation we have, do you not?
Yes.
Before you, why on slot seven and eleven, it's not the same as the rest of the?
There are, there is two court reporters that do share Willissey County as their district judge.
Okay, that's, those are the ones.
Right. Willissey County went from sharing six district judges to just sharing one, and the one-ninety-seventh Judicial District is now serving Willissey County solely in conjunction with Cameron. The rest of the district judges serve only Cameron County.
So those other two slots are paid?
Assigned to the one-ninety-seventh.
Yeah, they're paid more from Willissey County?
Yeah, they're paid four thousand and seventy-seven dollars.
Okay, including slot eleven.
And they rotate between each other?
Right, that's correct.
But are they?
They're actually making more than the current court reporters because of the salary.
What's their salary?
It is eighty-two, seven oh four.
But I thought that the, that the district judge, that the court reporters are all making the same amount of money today? Because what I understood the budget did last time around was that the salary for the court reporter from Willissey, that?
They're making the same, all from Cameron County.
No, I understood that the salary of the one-ninety-seventh court reporter was less than the other court reporters because she's, or he's getting a supplement from the, from the?
And that's the case.
I think right now, the one-ninety-seventh salary that Cameron County's paying is seventy-four, five thirty-five, plus the four thousand makes it seventy-eight, six, I think you said four thousand, seven dollars, anyway, it makes it seventy-eight, six twenty-six, which is what the Cameron County ones are all getting paid.
In my discussion?
Extra four thousand.
Judge Alejandro is that actually the Willissey County court reporters are making more than the Cameron County court reporters.
Not, not, not the numbers we're paying them. And see, I don't, you know, it's an eight-hour day, I mean, so everybody gets the same. I don't think that these court reporters should get less than a court reporter in Willissey County, that from Cameron County that works in Willissey County that gets a supplement just because there's legislation. Everybody should get the same amount, you know?
Well, that's why I noticed the difference there.
And that's what they're getting with the four thousand from Willissey County?
This court, we put everybody on par, according to what I've told.
On par, yes.
Well, but that's not what I'm understanding right now.
Because if you adopt the order based upon the current salary schedule, now the Willissey County court, for the one-ninety-seventh court reporter will be making less than the other court reporters.
But they make it up with the four thousand stipend from Willissey County to exactly what the court reporters here make. And they do have to go to Willissey County to get that extra four thousand.
You're right.
So that evens out.
It evens out, they all end up with the same. Two of them rotate and go to Willissey County now, as opposed to seven of them.
All right, do I have motion to acknowledge the presentation by Commissioner, is that the man, second by Commissioner, asking for? This is not, this is just acknowledging the presentation, not approving the presentation?
No, it's just an acknowledgement of the presentation.
My understanding is that the budget officer has these increases in his proposed budget.
But the motion is to acknowledge the report, it doesn't, doesn't show.
All right, so if they were, Mr. Samuel, hearing, yes?
I'm sure you can make a statement.
Can I hear a motion to table on number two? Motion by Commissioner, someone else, second by Commissioner, for discussion, all in fairness, signify like they're not. All right. Motion carries. Presentation of resolution, recognizing Dr. Sellers for his outstanding public service as a dentist, who cares?
Is he here?
Yeah, he's here. He's here. We had, we have a resolution that we passed honoring Dr. Sellers for many years of service, but Dr. Sellers is wanting us to recognize our dentist who cares, and that's what I want to talk about today, because I think it's important that we acknowledge not just the fine work that Dr. Sellers has done all his life in the community, but for all the dentists that are participating in this program. If you don't know what this program is, it's a program where dentists throughout the community of Cameron County, is it in Adagio County too, in Adagio County too?
And Star.
And Star, come together and provide services to indigenous children, dental services at their own cost, and very many needy children who are, who are in need of dental services. A program that's been around how long?
Ten years.
Ten years, and it's been extremely successful, it's served thousands of children all across the Rio Grande Valley, and has had enormously positive effect. Recently, when the federal government, when the state of Texas cut back chips funding for dental care, a lot of the work had to be picked up by the dentist who cares. You know, our kids, you know, they don't understand why programs are not funded. They, their, their physical being is not affected by what's going on in Austin only if they don't receive the care that they need. And when you have doctors who have taken the Hippocratic Oath to a new level by saying, you know, "We're not only going to do what's right for our patients, we're going to do what's right for our community, for the people that need it most, and for particularly our children who desperately need this kind of care," then, you know, it really ensures that our community becomes a better place to live. And so I want to acknowledge you, Doctor, and Doctor, for both of y'all, all the care that you give to our needy children throughout the community. I always say that, you know, and I'll say this because this is really, really appropriate now, is that God put us in this world for two reasons, or gave us two charges when he or she put us in this world, and the first charge is to take care of our families, and the second charge is to make sure that when you leave this world, you leave it better than what it was when you came into it. And doctors who care, I think, meet both of those charges in a very big way, because those are our children. those are our children. We're, we're all in this together, this is a family in the Rio Grande Valley. And so when you take care of these children, you take care of our family. And when you take care of these children, I know that when you leave this world, hoping in a long time, that you will leave it better than what it was. And thank you very much for your fine service. Would you like to say something?
Sure.
Doctor, doctor?
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate the recognition, but I'd like to redirect things a little bit from not what I did, but what we did. And it's easy to get things done when you have 120 dentists standing behind you, and my beautiful wife who disappeared.
Behind you, she's behind you.
The reason Dr. Nala Gordon is here is because of all the dentists in the valley, and all the pe, all the dentists who are, all the dentists Who Care, she's done more dentistry for the indigent children than anybody else.
I think we're doing dollars.
And I was just looking through some statistics, in a six-month period, the sample that I looked at, she did $8,500 of dentistry. And that's in her own office. We get nothing for doing this, except the pleasure of doing it. There were two children that she took care of that got over $2,000 of dentistry each. And so Nala's one of my heroes. Thank you. Overall, in the last 10 years, we've done over $2 million of dentistry, and we've served 20,000 children or more. The Dental Society that we have covers Willacy County, Starr County, Cameron County, and Padawka County. And it's, I was thinking the other day, what incredible leadership that we have there that no one really knows about. For instance, these are national leadership positions. In the, in the world of pediatric dentistry, we have Dr. Phil Hunky, who's the president at this time of the American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry, that's a national office. He was the president of the Texas Academy in 1998. We have Dr. Michael Adami, who was the president of the Texas Academy of General Dentistry. We have David Adami, Dr. David Adami, who last year was the president of the Texas Association of Orthodontics. So these, these are incredible leadership positions, I think. We have Dr. Juan Vareldi, sits on the Board of Dental Examiners, and he was, he is now presently the president of the National Hispanic Dental Association. We have Dr. Robert Diaz, who's presently the president of the Texas Academy of General Dentistry now. The academy is for doctors who do more than their share of continuing education. And the Texas component is, was the best state component in the nation last year, and our Dental Society was the best component in Texas. So as far as continuing education and distinguishing themselves with refined clinical skills, our Dental Society, your Dental Society, is the best of the nation. There's a fellow named Dr. Joe Pedales from Edinburgh, he was selected as the best new dentist in Texas, that's a dentist that's been in practice less than 10 years. Well, he competed with 49 other dentists from across the country at the national level, and he has clinical skills, continuing education, community service, and participation in the legislative process concerning dentistry, and he became the best new dentist of the nation. It's incredible, we have great leaders in our Dental Society. There's, there are many other awards and things that we've received, but I just wanted to press upon you that there's good leadership in our Dental Society. Dental Who Care has been around 10 years, and we feel we're an integrity group. And aside from taking care of indigent kids, the other thing that we want to promote is the idea, if you ever find money for indigent kids, we do vouchers free. But there is a system to utilize vouchers to provide dental care for kids where there is money available. It's the most efficient way to provide dental care, you don't have to build a building, hire staff, pay benefits, all you do is, the Lubbock School District does this under a system called direct reimbursement, their overhead's 4 percent, it takes one lady 20 hours a week to administer this program for a whole school district. So if you ever want to, if you ever have the opportunity to design a program for dentistry in this regard, there's leadership available, there's a program that works, and has worked for 20 years in Lubbock and other places. And that's all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do.
If you could give me those statistics, we want to build a reservation for the doctor's Who Care program in and of itself, and I can get that information.
Beautiful.
And, and I, I think we are interested in looking, I'm interested in looking at, see how we can incorporate what y'all do into our indigent, indigent care program. You know, we've been reading in the news about how the Health Services District is, is on the ropes right now because of Adalgo County's wanting to pull out, and, and I don't know what that's going to mean ultimately in terms of where we go with the Health Services District, but I think if that happens, we're going to have to reexamine how we handle indigent health care in Cameron County, and, and what we're going to do with the resources that we're going to go to that clinic for secondary care and so forth, and so, that's something that we probably need to explore. And I think, I, I know that I would like to very much sit down and talk to you all and find out how the county can get involved and provide some resources for our kids that need dental care. I mean, it's a, it's a big thing, I mean, it really is a big thing. I've, I've got friends that are dentists, and when they were cutting the CHIPS program, I mean, they just, they were scrambling to get as many kids in as quickly as possible before there was not going to be any money available for dental care, because these kids, they were going to have a really hard time without having had their, their teeth fixed after the deadline for the CHIPS program. So I know it has an enormous impact in our community, and we really would like to sit down and talk to y'all about it.
I know it work, I know the voucher program will work for dentistry, I'm not sure about the medical aspects. And just, just to give you a perspective, in the Medicaid program in Texas, I think it's $6 billion, something like that, dentistry is 200 million of that, it's just a very small fraction, but we are able to do a great deal for the children, just through the Medicaid program, the CHIPS program, but there are kids that have no money, no Medicaid, no insurance, and that's where a voucher program could work. We use the school nurses to pass out the vouchers, because they know who needs them. And it allows people to, freedom of choice, you can go to Brownsville Community Health Center with this voucher, to Clinica, your local dentist, you can choose, the, the folks can choose how they want their dental care presented, so it's a, it's an excellent, excellent method, and we would like to help if asked, thank you.
Grayson, I'd just like to mention one thing, you know, I called your office Friday afternoon, visited with your staff, and the message on your phone recording while I waited, you know, was not a marketing tool, but was more of an informative tool, and I appreciated that, you know, I didn't want it to end, because I wanted to find out more of what was going on. But I remember 10 years ago, when you and Dr. Will Weaver made some visits in regards to dentist Who Care, and, you know, my wife asked me, who are these people? And I had met you, when you had first come into Harlingen, you've always done a really good job for the folks in the community, and we really appreciate that, and we look forward though, hopefully, in working something out, where if something comes down that we can partner with through what we do in our healthcare program, it would be great to use, utilize you all.
That's special to me, because your wife Dorothy was the leader at that facility, at the Levi's, I believe it was, and she was the first one to believe in us, and the first one to give us a sizable amount of money to get it started.
Now, what was the number again, I think the public needs to hear, because that's impressive, all the doctors that are involved, I mean, the dentists that are involved, 120?
I think there's roughly 180 dentists in the four county area.
Uh-huh.
120 of them, at one time or another, have pledged to work with dentist Who Care. At any given time, there's about 80 that are involved, either they've been on the mobile unit working, or they do vouchers in their office. And this fluctuates, you know, people have things happen, busy seasons, slow seasons, or different things happen, but it's, we try to design it to accommodate the dentists, because they're the ones giving away, giving up a day in their office and giving away their services.
Well, I think that's wonderful teamwork, thank you.
Doctor, I know that I missed it with you in your mobile unit when it was at Cameron Park one day, and certainly, the children in that area have a great need, and we all appreciate the work that y'all do, that you do there, and that you do in the other counties. It's very important for, for us and for the kids.
I look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay, there, I want you to acknowledge presentation, my commissioner, my commissioner, Wood, in for discussion, all in fairness, if I may say, and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. All right, let me, I'm going to jump through the agenda, that's all right with y'all. We've got item number 12, consideration and action to approve construction management at risk as a method for constructing the jail annex, and to issue a request for qualifications for construction management at risk services for the jail annex construction project, Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioner, with me, to the right, my left, is Burns from Burns and Gills, associate out of Fort Worth, and he is the one that has work on the plans to convert the warehouse behavior there into a jail annex. And we felt that the best thing to do is to have a mandatory risk for that particular project. As you will know, we'll send out for proposals, probably set up a committee to view these proposals, and then the mandatory risk will be the one that will answer to Burns and to us, and specifically to the court, and hopefully, we can move forward with the project that we have in mind.
This is the warehouse project, right?
That is correct, Judge.
Okay. He's right behind you.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Burns?
Go ahead.
What I did bring today, a copy of the RFQ, it's not complete, but it's the request for qualifications that we would need to issue to select a construction manager, so I have a copy that I can give to each one of you, so we can talk about it, if you have questions. There are some key dates and things that we would need to plug in, should you choose to go ahead and do all this. We, we need to do this as quickly as possible, because we're within a month of getting complete with the plans, and we need a construction method selected, and a construction, our contractor on board, ready to start the bidding process, and start working with us as quickly as possible. So let me.
So you're saying that, that if we go through the process now, and if we make a decision to grow the construction manager at risk, method of construction, that, that we can go out for qualifications now, and by the time the process is complete to select someone, that you will be already complete with the plans?
Correct, and we'd be ready to go out for bids.
Finish with the plans.
Trying to, you know, keep the project moving as quickly as we can.
And, and, and the question I have, you know, we've done construction manager at risk once before, when we did the boot camp, doing our boot camp at Cameron County, but the question I have, but when we did that, we already had our plans, and so when we went out for the proposals, they, they used the plans to submit their proposals on it. Is it possible for, for these construction manager at risk individuals who would be proposing or responding to the request for proposals? It's not a request for bids, is it a request for proposals?
Correct, it's a request for qualifications.
For qualifications, I'm sorry.
And we, would it?
Was it possible for them to, to be able to, to submit a proposal without having seen the plans?
Well, they will see the plans, they, we have to issue the plans as part of the request for qualification, not necessarily the complete set of plans, but we have to issue enough information to them so that they can show us their qualifications on building a facility like this, an attention facility, show us what public works they've done, what work they may have done in Cameron County. It's a two-step process, that would be the first step. From that first step, we would develop a short list of firms that you would want to interview.
But I'm, I'm a little bit confused on the order of things, because you're asking us to consider, to take action to approve this method of construction for the annex, and I, and the way I see this project, in terms of what we're doing, because we've got an existing building that we've got to go in there and convert into a jail, medium security facility, medium or minimum, I can't remember where y'all were at.
That's correct, medium.
Medium security facility, it seems like it, it's very conducive to this kind of a construction method. But, but what I don't understand is, in terms of the procedure, if you, if you, what you want us to approve today is, is to go with a method, but the next step would be then to prepare the proposal, but the request for proposal's not going to go out until such time as we've got the plans?
No, not, sir, let me, let me try to explain it, and we are asking for two things today. One would be that you pick the method that you want to use. We are recommending to you construction management at risk. There are five total methods available to counties to build facilities like this, at this point, really only four of them would apply. The fifth one is design-build, I think y'all have been down that road before, we're beyond the point of doing design-build, and I think you don't want to do that based on maybe problems you've had at the jail because of design-build. If that leaves you with four methods, we believe construction management at risk is the best method, because it allows you to select a qualified contractor to be your construction manager, to be in charge of building that project. So that's the first thing we're asking for, to make that decision, again, there are other methods, but we think that's the best one for you. Once you've made that decision.
Why?
Why?
Yeah.
Because you get to pick who you're going to use based on their qualifications. The, if, let me, if you got, let me run through the different methods.
Yeah, let me, let me have the other three.
Yeah, let me tell you about those, so you'll understand where we're coming from. The, the old-fashioned method, which everybody knows, is called competitive bidding.
Right.
That's where the architect puts the plans together, you issue it, you get bids back from a general contractor. Now, what's good about that, it makes everybody competitive. What's bad about that is you're going to get stuck with the lowest-cost contractor. In county government, that is not always the best. So the state, the way they write their, the legal aspects to all this, it says you're looking for what gives the best value to the county. Low bid is not necessarily best value to a county.
For a jail.
For a jail, any building, you, you could get somebody that tells you they can do it cheaper than everybody else, and you will have more headaches, more problems than you can imagine, because they don't know what they're doing, they've underbid the job, and you know, it just can lead to all kinds of problems, because you're not getting necessarily the most qualified person, you're getting the lowest bid. So that's, that's.
Yeah, but there's always the lowest responsible bid, you know?
Right, so it's very, it's very tough to throw out that low bid, how do you prove that it's not responsible? It's, it's, you know, it can be done, but it's, it's always a tough issue when you've got those bids in, and you look at them, and you, you say, well, you know, how do you determine that, that he's not responsible? How do you determine that the second lowest bid's not responsible? It's, it's a tough area, because there's not much leeway that the state gives you when you're bidding hard bid like that, competitive bidding.
Let me, I'm going to ask, are you saying that you're, for an architect, you're going to bid, or for?
No, 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 about construction.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the, let me, and let me go through the other methods as quickly as I can. The second method would be called competitive sealed proposals, now that's a good method too, we actually like that method, because it gives us the competitive aspects, like the one we just talked about, but it also allows you to put some criteria in your bid package that can let you select your contractor on a basis other than just low bid. You know, we could look at qualifications at that point, and we could look at whether or not they're based in Cameron County, or, you know, wherever, if, if that's an important criteria. So that is a very good method too, if you want to go that competitive route, it's better than the normal competitive route. Now, there are two construction management methods, one is called construction manager as agent, we do not recommend that, nobody likes that, you will not be happy with that, it's where you hire a construction manager, you pay him to go out and find a bunch of subcontractors, so that you can have 25 contracts between the county and the subcontractors, you pay the construction manager to supervise, he basically has little responsibility, gets all the money, and if there's a problem, the commissioners' court ends up getting that problem, because they're the ones that have the contract of all the individual subcontractors. We don't think that's a good method, we think you want one contract between you and the construction firm. think you want one contract between you and the construction firm, not 25 subcontractors. The other method, like we've recommended, is construction manager at risk. It puts the construction manager at risk like a general contractor would be. It's one contract. If there's a problem, it's the contractor's problem. But you get to pick that contractor based on their qualifications. You bring them in before the plans go out for bids, and they are the ones that are working with all the subcontractors trying to find the best value for the county. That's why we think it's the best method. You know who you're gonna get to supervise the job. He's gonna do, he's gonna get paid a fee like I'm getting paid to find you the best subcontractors to do the job at the lowest price.
And as I understand, in that process, the construction manager at risk, once he puts out for bids on each aspect of the construction, that he says, you know, I want a bid on the roof-
Right.
Who's gonna build a roof at the facility. And people, bids come in from the different subcontractors. He has the option of rejecting all those bids and submitting his own bid lower than the other bids, as I understand. Is that the way it works?
Not totally. The law does say that a construction manager can bid the work and self-perform the work, but they have to provide a bid at bid time, just like any other subcontractor, without prior knowledge. So say if they are doing the roof, he has to put his bid in a sealed envelope, just like all the other bidders. He doesn't get to look at all the other bids and then submit his. We are there watching that just as well as we'd expect county folks to be there, too, to make sure that, you know, everything's on the up and up. If, in fact, you open the bids and he is low, then he can self-perform that work. Lot of these contractors like to self-perform concrete work. It's better and easier for them to control what's going on if they do that. So you'll see them tend to bid concrete work. There may be, there's a few trades that, like carpentry, you don't think about that, but carpenters just don't come out and bid jobs. But there's always minor carpentry work in any construction, and so they end up having to fill in some of the gaps that they know they just won't get bids on, and that's normal in the construction process. But he can bid, you know, individual trades, but, you know, it has to be that he submits a bid just like everybody else. He can't just give it to himself.
Have we done any jobs with this method, Judge?
I think we did the Juneau Boot Camp.
Yeah, that was before.
Which was that?
Daryl Heston.
The Daryl-
The Juneau, the Amadeo. No, just the boot camp.
Just the boot camp.
It's the only one I know that we've done that way.
That was before our time.
Judge, has this been, has this been discussed or cleared with our county purchasing?
No, no, I have not talked purchasing it.
Why don't we do this? I'm interested-
It is a viable option, you know, can collect it.
What I'd like to do is, I don't know whether or not our construction department has looked at this issue and whether our attorneys have looked at this issue and whether our purchasing department and auditors' office have looked at this issue. I would like to have them examined it for a week. I mean, we don't need you to come back next week. I'm personally in favor of going this route, but I'd like everybody to have a comfort level that they need to have, and give the commissioners a week to kind of mull it around and see where they want to go on this, and have all these folks kind of sit down. In fact, I don't know how long you were here today for, but if we can get our folks to meet with you today-
Absolutely. I'm available.
That's-
That would be a good thing, if we can get, is Eddie here?
Eddie's over here. Did you have a handout that you wanted to give us?
Well, if we're going to meet with everybody else, maybe, and I can do it either way. Maybe I need to save it, and we talk about it, and then they can show you what I've got, or I can go ahead and-
No, I think, I think now's the time to talk about that because these folks are really gonna have to approve it, but the professionals that are out there need to take a look at this thing.
The one thing that I think you'll like about this approach is that you, as a court, get to make the decision on who would be building it. So it's a two-step process where you get qualifications in, and then you would, a short list of those, then you get to interview the people that you feel like you want to consider in doing the job.
Okay. You want to table for questions?
Why don't you look? That's fine. I'll move the table till next week.
And Eddie, if y'all can, and Mark, I don't know where Mike- Can you meet at 1:30 today?
Sure.
Can we meet in my office or purchasing?
We can meet in your office.
At 1:30. So let's see, let's see who's gonna, can you be there, Richard?
Yes, sir.
So it's Richard, Eddie, Mark's office, Michael, somebody from, I don't know if, Mr. No-Husband, do you need to be there, or would you be the person from, or, huh?
Eddie.
Huh?
Pete.
Or Pete? And Pete, can you be there?
Eddie's gonna be there.
Okay.
Eddie, Eddie will be there.
Yeah, Eddie will come.
Honda? You'll be there, too? Okay, good.
Judge, I think with that number, our conference room would be better, probably.
Is that all right? Okay. And right across the hall at 1:30 was a sheriff and y'all. That'd be really good. And Remy, can you be there?
I have a bellbon board meeting that shouldn't take more than five minutes, but I can get here. It's exactly 1:30.
And if we have any questions?
I think, yeah.
If we have any questions on this, I'd like to just contact someone, and not take up so much time.
He's got his email address right there. Yeah, you're in there. Kay Burns.
That's, that's, that's a contact.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, I can have my court to give you a call and describe the process we went through about five or six years ago with Peacock Construction. We used Phil Peacock to be the manager at risk for the construction of the Amadeo.
Well, I'll review it, and then I'll have my-
There's an article in the paper where Emma went and looked it up in the dictionary and described it in detail. Very few things I agree with her, but it was a nice little description. So you might want to check that out, too. Okay. Thank you. I want to breathe for a second. Any further discussion? All those affairs are back there.
Aye, thank you.
Okay. Judge, I saw you sitting back there, and I'm sorry. I know you've got to get back to your court. What item were you waiting on, sir? Judge Gomez?
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, good morning again.
Good morning.
On the travel items, I think we have a request from County Court One and County Court Three to have the co-administrative court coordinators travel to their mentoring, continuing education. It's in October.
That's item number F, thirty-seven F.
I know our item's on it. I believe County Court also has their item on.
A and F.
This covers both staffs.
Anybody have any questions, concerns, or comments?
I'm going to approve all of the travel items, Judge.
All right. Motion, my Commissioner, that's the second, my Commissioner, for discussion only, per se, by seven nine.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge. I'm sorry I didn't, I was looking at you and your brother back there. Constable, you have something on the agenda as well? Let me, on item number thirteen, oh, I'm sorry, what did you have?
I thought you said constable.
Which one, which one item do you have?
We have fifteen and sixteen, sir. Precinct Two.
Consideration approval of K-9 program to be initiated by the Cameron County Constable Department Precinct Two, and considerations for funds from Fund 900 K-9 deputy salary increase incentive.
Yes, sir. We basically are coming here seeking the approval of the Commissioner and County Judge to install a K-9 program. All funding will come from the Fund 900 Asset Forfeiture Fund, so it will be at no cost to the county or the citizens of Cameron County.
Sixteen, also the salary?
Yes, sir. All of that is coming out of our forfeiture fund.
Anybody have any thoughts or questions on that?
Yeah, according to the background information, that's, that was it. It included the increase.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
I have a question, you know. I mean, we're looking at hiring warrant officers to execute warrants countywide, to collect fines due to this county by the constables, or to help the constables, you know? And here we are, you know, doing a K-9 unit, and I don't know, and I might be completely off the wall, out in left field, I don't know. But there are K-9 units, this precinct is in Brownsville, right?
Yes, sir, it is.
The school district has K-9 units.
Yes, sir.
The city has K-9 units.
That's correct.
The county has K-9 units. DPS has K-9 units. Customs has K-9 units.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, it would seem to me that I'd rather see you guys out there collecting fines than having more K-9 units. And that's just a personal observation, personal opinion. I don't know how the rest of this court feels, but a K-9 unit becomes an expensive item because once you buy that dog and train it, and I think on occasion, we have lost an officer or a dog that we've paid for and trained to another entity, Customs in that particular instance, you know, once you're trained, you become a commodity out there that there's not too many of, and we don't pay as much as Customs does or some of the other entities pay for that same service, you know, we end up with an animal that we can't use, you know, when there's already many around that are available for a phone call. So I'm trying to justify in my mind why we would want to do this.
What does that have to do with award thing?
Well, it has to do just because one individual is gonna be doing K-9 when they could be serving warrants.
Oh, okay.
The primary job description from the state statute is serving warrants for JP courts and acting as bailiffs in JP courts.
Yes, sir, it is, but unfortunately, we've taken other steps. I mean, we're out there enforcing patrol.
You know, when you're enforcing patrol, you're out there in the county, you're driving by houses that warrants is outstanding for-
We're serving-
And we have, according to the JP's, millions of dollars in warrants that haven't been served.
We're out there doing, I mean, civil process, which entails serving warrants, as you say, but with a seven-man department, it's, six of which are only out there on patrol and serving those warrants and civil processes, it's kind of hard to collect millions of dollars worth of warrants when you have six people, and our precinct being one of the largest in population. I mean, it's difficult to-
I understand that your precinct that you serve is not as far behind as some of the other precincts in the county. So, you know, I think our statements are kind of blanketing and not directed, you know, at one particular constable's office.
Yes, sir.
If you look at the entire county as a whole-
Yes, sir.
There's a real problem in getting warrants served by constables.
And I believe, to my notion of what I, the knowledge that I have with that, that warrant officer would serve Cameron County, not just our precinct.
Well, and one person can't do all of it.
That's correct.
So I'm, you know, I would expect that a year from now, everyone would be coming back wanting an additional person, you know, one or two more in each office.
And I guess-
And it's the constable's responsibility to serve those warrants.
Yes, well, and like you say, we're not far behind it.
I'd like to.
If I can.
Okay.
I think these are different issues. The warrant officers that the JP's are asking for is gonna be someone who's gonna sit down and go through all the old tickets that have been issued that have never been paid, or people either haven't shown up or didn't pay the tickets, and just focus on going out there and finding those people. That's a far different thing than when the, these constables are handed a warrant by JP to go serve. You know, I know that this, I know how this constable's office works, and I know that they are giving, given a warrant, they go out and try to serve it. Once they try to serve it, that's it. They move on to the next issue because they've got an enormously large district. I mean, this one, this JP, this constable's office serves half of Brownsville. I mean, Precinct Two is, I mean, half of Cameron County. Precinct Two is all of Brownsville. It's, that makes up almost half the entire population of Cameron County. It is impossible for them to do anything more than what they're doing with the current job that they have. If you've got, the concept of the warrant officers that is being proposed by the JP's is an individual that is just solely gonna focus on going back and looking at those old tickets that weren't, that weren't paid, right? That weren't paid for whatever reason. They didn't show up, they didn't pay it after they showed up on a payment plan or whatever. And that's a big, big difference in it. And then, and we have to also recognize that constables' duties and responsibilities don't only include serving warrants, that they do law enforcement, they do patrol. I mean, I know, for example, you know, your office and Constable Gomez's office, they spend a whole bunch of time out in the community doing traffic citations, doing patrol, you know, helping people, you know, domestic disputes and all sorts of issues that arise. And that takes a lot of time. Each time they get called on one issue or another, it's an enormously large effort that is undertaken by the constable's office. They don't have the resources to sit down and go through JP's files and pick each ticket out of there and then run on each ticket and try to find the individual that hasn't paid the fine. I mean, it's impossible to do that, you know? And I want, I want to encourage constables who want to use traditional law enforcement efforts to work with the sheriff's department and work with the local police department to enforce the drug laws of our community and not discourage them. If they have the innovation and the will to go out there and do this kind of stuff, I think this is a good thing. And I'm very much pleased that Precinct Two is looking at this area. And so I just, I don't want us to mix apples with oranges. It's not the same thing. It's one officer, I don't want us to hurt our ability to implement this one officer program by confusing the issue of what constables are charged to do and what they can do with that issue. Because when we start doing that, I had a long conversation with Constable Gomez, this, and Constable Diaz last week about this issue, because they were concerned about, you know, what this is, you know, are they being criticized for not doing this? And my response, well, that's not what this warrant officer's job is supposed to do. It's a different charge completely than what you're being asked to do, so.
Well, I have, I have some questions, Judge, and I think maybe this will clarify things. Talking about apples and oranges, let's go to the funding that you're getting it from. What are the guidelines for that funding?
What are the guidelines for the Fund 900? It is for equipment and training on the officers.
Equipment, training on the officers.
Law enforcement, equipment and training, yes.
Okay, so that's within the guidelines of spending this money, so we can clarify that and get that out of the way.
Well, the reason why this is brought before the Commissioner's Court is because the dog requires daily care. It will have to be assigned to an individual. That is, since the dog, even though purchased with forfeiture funds, will be property of Cameron County.
Okay, so that's, well, that's, that's clear, Mark. Now, let me continue my questioning, if I may. So, give me the justification. I'm sure there's one, because as we read this, it says protecting our borders and citizens in Cameron County from illegal contraband, and it goes on. So you have seen a percentage of need, additional need on this? That's what I want to hear.
Yes, ma'am. I was wanting to add what the judge was saying. First, I will answer your question, but first of all, on warrants. From our JP's, I've seen warrants that are from people out of Canada, out of Mexico, out of Arizona. We've contacted them. We've made an effort, and some people moved, or there's no way of collecting those funds because they're in another country. That's one issue there. The second of all, have we seen a need for it? Yes, we have. Right now, currently, we have $47,000 in our asset forfeiture fund, which have come from assisting other agencies, as the judge said, in particular the District Attorney's Office. We have about $100,000 worth of assets out there pending forfeiture, which include currency from drug cases, vehicles, and property. So we have seen an increase within the last year that we've been making an effort to enforce other things other than just our civil process, doing patrol, doing narcotics, taking a number of calls, and assisting the sheriff's office and assisting fellow agencies, both on the state and federal level.
So the coordination would be there?
Yes, ma'am.
The reason it has to come before Commissioner's Court is that it's been paid all the usual fees now. Since it is a county asset, then that is a compensable activity. A number of practices before, a few years ago, was that the dog was assigned to an officer, and he took care of it in his spare time. And now, cop- And I'm confident that provides us, put it so to say, the county agrees to federal labor standards act issues to, that we litigated probably a year ago.
So that, that person that will be assigned to this, if it's approved?
Yes, ma'am.
They would be doing solely this?
No, ma'am. They, they'll still be responsible for patrol. It'll be a specialty skill, the K-9, but they will still be responsible for patrol and civil service, or civil process.
Do we have equipment, or do we have a vehicle equipped to accommodate a K-9?
We do not, but we already went, I already went out there and got three bids from three different companies, and it's in the process of being forwarded to the purchasing department.
And all of that would come from this fund?
Yes, ma'am.
And you have the sufficient amount of money?
Yes, ma'am. Currently, we should have $40,000 of those 47,000.
Are you going to convert a vehicle, or are you looking at a new vehicle?
No, sir, we're going to convert one of our current vehicles, so...
Well, that's expensive. And in addition to doing law enforcement in this critical area, it allows your fund to grow too, because...
That is correct. That is the purpose.
You demand that for other issues?
We, we hope that we will be investing approximately about $20,000, and we, hopefully we should double or triple that within the first year because of the quality of the dog and because of the officer that is, that is being picked for this function. I feel very confident that we will be able to produce for, for Cameron County and the citizens.
Okay. This, this, Mark, this doesn't, you don't have to put out bids for these type of dogs, do you? I mean, what is the procurement process?
You have the dog already, no? Do you have a dog already?
Uh, we already are in contact with a vendor out of Marketplace, Alabama, for this K-9. It's a specialty dog.
You don't want the low bid dog, okay?
It's a, yeah.
Construction at risk or whatever, you know?
It, it, it was brought to my attention by Mr. Yates, sir, that there is a dog that can be donated to Cameron County out of Blackland Air Force Base. They have a program right now for law enforcement agencies. But I explained to him, and they explained to me over there, that we don't know the physical disabilities of the dog or the mental disabilities, and I would not like to go out there and get a K-9 for the county that might be a liability issue in the future turned around.
Well, we've already been down that route, and we've spent a lot of money in veterinary services with the last one.
Well, it's not a biddable service. How we acquire it is still to be discovered. By looking at it, we want to make sure that we take the process against the constable the best dog.
Well, be, be real careful when people donate things. Sometimes you need to really evaluate that. So I make a motion, we approve the K-9 program.
Is there a second? I'll second that motion. Any further discussion, all those in favor, sign a "a" by my side and I.
Aye.
Both, motion carries.
Thank you.
We needed a 16.
16? Right? Yeah, well, I thought it was on 15 and 16 was...
Oh, wait, the motion was for both?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay. On number 13, I know you're waiting in there, consideration and possible authorization to execute an architectural agreement between Gomez, Mendez, Science, and Cameron County Park with design and project coordination of Las Baranza Park renovation, Rio Hondo, La Paloma, Los Laveles, Aquas, City renovations for Santa Rosa, Santa Maria, and Dona's Plaza Park. When this thing came out, when I talked to you about this thing, I, I thought we were limited to the parks where there's already been a preliminary design. And I got some phone calls from other companies that want to propose on these things. So my, my suggestion is that, I know that a preliminary design has been made by Mendez on the Rio Hondo and La Paloma ones, so I would ask that we limit number 13 just to those two parks for right now, if that's all right. Because, and then go out for proposals on everything else and let other people propose. And Gomez, Mendez might be the one to get it, but I think we really need to give. Those two parks are really pretty far along, bought the land, we're ready to go and so forth, and I'd like to go for them. But the other, and they've already done a lot of work on this project. But let's, on the other ones, let's give everybody else an opportunity to propose.
So the Rio Hondo, La Paloma?
Yes.
Do you want to remove also Cameron Park?
How far, how far along? Has he done a preliminary proposal on Cameron Park also? Okay, that's fine.
Add it.
That's, that's Las Baranza. Okay, so it would be Las Baranza, Rio Hondo.
I'm doing La Paloma.
I want to ask you about M and O for the parks we don't have that we're looking at building. Has that been planned out, where we're going to get the money to maintain and operate these parks? Do you know what it's going to cost to maintain them and operate them?
Well, we know what it's going to cost, and we just hope with, with the concessions on the island, they'll be able to subsidize.
Well, right now, your, your island income from the concessions is pretty well eaten up with what we have. Where do you expect to get additional income?
And that's basically for two parts, because Las Baranza, you already have a budget.
Yeah, that's there, but, right. We've got a lot planned, and I don't know where we're going to get money to operate them, maintain them, staff them.
Well, what I have planned, I've talked to Javier about this, was going to be able to cut down a little bit, was creating, and I spoke to you about this also, not, not in detail, but what I wanted to do this year was try to create a, a Greens division. I've been talking about this for a while already, but instead of buying equipment for each park, I'll just buy one piece of equipment or two pieces of equipment, have, you know, one crew. That's all they do is mow grass and trim trees and, you know, do that, that type of work. The rest of the crew will do the regular maintenance and the, the construction part of the, the maintenance of the park.
And what you have talked is, is about really actually restructuring your, your system, management system.
It'll be able to save us, make it more efficient for us.
Okay, do I have a motion on 13 for, to execute an architectural agreement with, between Gomez, Mendez, and Science in Cameron County on Las Baranza Park renovation, Rio Hondo, La Paloma?
So move.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that, Judge.
And we would be going out for...
On the, on the other one.
On the others.
Okay, all those in favor, signal a "a" by my side and I?
Aye.
Both, motion carries.
No.
Any other items to take out of order? I'm going to just go ahead and with the rest of the agenda. Budget amendments, line item transfers, and/or salary schedules? Any questions, concerns, comments, complaints? Do I have a motion to approve?
Any additions?
Any additions?
I have one question. Set, consider them.
On five?
I'm sorry. No, I don't have a question on five.
So move. Motion by commission of assets, second to that motion by commission of line, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal a "a" by my side and I?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Minutes, August 8th, 2006, laser meeting. Any quest, anybody ready on the minutes?
I'm ready.
Who's ready? Back.
Look for a second.
Second by commission of assets, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal a "a" by my side and I?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Claims, questions, concerns, comments, any additions?
No, but I have one deletion here. Check number 165884. We wish to withdraw from the list of approved claims.
All right. Any other questions, comments, complaints on the claims? Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by commission of assets, second by commission of one, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal a "a" by my side and I?
Aye.
Both, motion carries.
Not my abstention on 00165935.
And note my abstention to the Lubomir Water District, warrant number 00165890, and to Southwest Key Program, number 00165968. Okay. Motion carries. Eight, consideration, authorization to hold a public hearing regarding, let me get back to just that one, I'm sorry. Let me get the other stuff out of the way real quick. The consideration and selection of option for the Veterans Bridge expansion project?
What number is that?
Seventeen?
Yeah. Seventeen. We forgot that extra. Put it out. Yeah.
We didn't get this one. Got the pictures.
Yes, I got the pictures.
We have to do something about this. Man, I mean, the lines are an hour now on the Veterans Bridge with those trucks. We just need to do something on the team. It's really, really bad. And I don't know why, whether it's the trucks or whether it's the, the increased security at the bridge as a result of all the terrorist issues that we've got out there. But I've seen the lines extend beyond the entire bridge, the truck lines, the entire bridge, past the, the Mexican station, past Soroyana?
Soroyana.
Past that street over there, probably another mile lined up. And then, and then as a result of that, the cars are, are backed up all the way to the end of the bridge. This is not a short bridge, like the Gateway Bridge. This is a long bridge. The wait is at least an hour or more, and we built this bridge because we wanted to let people, give people the opportunity to go back and forth between the United States and Mexico as freely, as quickly as possible. And now, you know, the other day, the Gateway Bridge, the, the line was all the way to the railroad tracks, and the B and M Bridge, the line, the line was all the way to the railroad tracks. And there was a bunch of people lined up to, to go around all the way up and down. What is it, what's the name of that street, the main street?
Alvaro Regón.
Alvaro Regón, to get onto, in the other direction, to get onto the B and M Bridge. We've got a really serious problem that, that, whether it's a new problem, I hadn't noticed it, maybe I hadn't been to Mexico.
The waiting times have increased the last couple of weeks. I know Saturday and Sunday at Los Indios, we kept getting calls all day long because the waiting times were getting closer to two hours.
I believe this is an example of last week. I know the, the border governors had a conference in Austin, I think it was the Secretary at Exteriors in Mexico, Bosco, that in his presentation to the governors at their opening ceremonies was that we need more bridges between the US and Mexico. There are not enough to accommodate the traffic needs that we have.
Well, and, and, it might not necessarily be that we need more additional crossings, but I think...
This will help alleviate the problem we have.
We need, you know, to, to utilize the resources better with US Customs and, and be able to operate all the primary lanes as opposed to just operating half of the lanes. But what we have today, we've got four different options that we've looked at. The first option is 330-foot span that would accommodate, or we would be able to stage 20 trucks. It's, it's a four-lane, 330-feet section. The cost is about $3.4 million.
And that doesn't make any sense if the line, the trucks are backed up all the way to the end of the bridge.
Right. We, we, we looked at four different options. That's, that's the first option, sixth an option, and that's at 15 miles an hour. Then we looked at an option, again, 330 feet, designed at, at 30 miles an hour, we'd be able to store or stage 24 trucks, and that cost is $4.1 million. Then we looked at the option of 622 feet, and that's at, at 30 miles an hour, and the cost is $5.8 million, and we will be able to stage 40 trucks.
Is that all the way across?
No, that's, that's not the correct, no, it's 622 feet. That's not the correct slide. Okay, that's, that's at 30 miles an hour, we'd be able to stage 40 trucks. And that's four lanes, and it said it's a 622-foot section. It's a little bit more than that when you add the transition section, what's in the light gray. And on all the options, what's in the light gray will stay once we build, once we build the ultimate bridge section. What's in the darker gray is going to come out when we build the, the ultimate section.
Pete, how do you, how can you stage more vehicles at a slower speed with the same distance?
Because of the transition. The transition is a little bit, it's a little bit wider, so we're able to stage more trucks.
At a slower speed?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the option that we're recommending is a 622-foot span at 15 miles an hour, and that would, we would be able to stage 42 trucks, and the cost of that is $5.3 million.
I don't understand what you mean by at 15 miles an hour. What do you mean by that?
The design.
The design.
When you're going from the existing bridge into the new bridge, the new span that we would add, there is a transition to take the trucks from one bridge to the other bridge.
If you go slower, I guess you could be closer to each other.
Right.
Yeah. But tell me why we're doing this and we're, you're recommending this and not just a new span?
Because if, if we go with a new span all the way to Mexico, you know, we're probably going to take 10 years. By the time we get all the, the necessary permits and we get Mexico to agree, we can't go to the middle of the bridge if Mexico is not going to do it.
Why not try? I mean, why would you think it would take 10 years?
Well, we can build this, and then when we do, we can work on that.
Then move to...
Right, that's, that's, that's on page three.
Yeah, that's face...
With anything, regardless of which option we select, we, we can always go to phase two or the phase three, which is the ultimate.
Three phases that we approve.
But let me ask you this, okay? I mean, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that in the sense of what you're saying that it's not, it's going to be, it's going to come to, to be used if you have an expansion just the same. But explain to me how the permit process, aside from the diplomatic note issue with Mexico and us being able to get Mexico to agree to build another span, explain to me how you're going to have any more permit requirements by adding 600, I mean, adding a span than adding 620 feet? I mean, it's the same thing. You have to go to, to all the federal agencies to get the permits for the same exact thing on our half of the bridge, because at 620 feet, you're taking up, you're getting pretty close to midway there, right?
About three-fourths. We're, we're staying away from the line of demarcation, which is the center.
You're about three-fourths of the mid...
Right, because once we do that, then we have to do a detailed hydraulic analysis that IBWC will require to see how the, the flow of the river will be impacted.
So we don't have to do a hydraulic...
We'll probably have to run, run a, a HIC-RAS model, you know, real simple, because we're, we're, we're staying way off from the, from the center of the river. Probably the core of engineers, you know, will have to look at permitting with them. The, the Coast Guard, although I believe the Coast Guard, whichever option we select, would probably need to amend the existing permit. But when, when we stay away from the, the international span, it just becomes a lot, a lot easier for us to deal with the federal agencies. Because all the agencies are going to say, well, we need to wait to see what Mexico is going to require. We're going, we need to wait to see if Mexico is going to approve it or not, especially IBWC, because IBWC, you have the US section, and then we have the Mexican section.
Why would Mexico not want this? Because they're the ones that are most affected here in terms of how this truck traffic affects them.
And I don't think we're saying that, that they don't want it, but I think what we're proposing is we start off, we start off with a, a 600-foot span, and then while we're doing that concurrently, we're working in Mexico for the ultimate section. And we, we look here at, at what we're recommending, the 600-foot section at 15 miles an hour, it's $5.3 million. And then it, to go to the ultimate section is one, an additional $1.9 million. It'd be a total of $7, $7.2 million to do the ultimate, so...
To do the what?
To do the ultimate, build out...
The middle of the bridge, of the river.
But while we're doing the 600-foot section, you know, we can be working with Mexico on the ultimate, on the ultimate section for the bridge.
So what you're doing...
And what we, and what we accomplish by doing that is we take care of the immediate need in that we've got a, a big problem with the mixture of passenger vehicles and commercial vehicles. And, and so we take care of that, because I think the design time for this is probably, you know, six months. So it's conceivably in the next six to nine months, we can, we can be ready to go to construction.
But, but the permit process is going to take a while, no?
We're not anticipating that, that, that will be a, a problem on the environmental assessment. It'll require some work, but all that can be done concurrently while we're doing the design within the, the timeframe.
Well, can we, what I, I don't know whether we've ever taken action to go ahead and approve going forward with a new span, but I, I would like for you to put that on the agenda next[1795.16] But I would like for you to put that on the agenda next week so that we can say, okay, fine, we're going to go forward with this, with your proposal, but we want to start everything, all, everything, we need for you to do, everything necessary to go for the full span now.
Okay.
Simultaneously with doing this so that we can not waste any time, go forward, and maybe, maybe when pushed, when we get down to the construction time, we may get indications that we may be able to do the whole thing all at one time and get Mexico to agree on the additional span. Because it really, it has become, for whatever reason, whether it's customs or whether it's just the increased traffic or the fact that we've got one bridge that is being utilized for vehicular and truck traffic as opposed to having more than one bridge or a segregated bridge that would just deal with truck traffic, we've got a problem that we need to address. And I don't think that it's going to take 10 years to get it done. I don't think that it's going to take three years to get it done. I mean, I think it's something that if we, if we put up, if we give you our approval now and we put the wheels in motion, we can get this thing relatively quick. You know, our, our relationship with the federal agencies that are involved in the permitting problem, so it's, I think it's such that, you know, we, we probably can can, and particularly if we get the help that we've gotten from Senator Hutchinson in the past, I think we can get this thing going relatively quick in terms of the permit process. And I think that Mexico probably sees the benefit in a big way. The financial aspect of it is quite clear that, it's quite clear that this additional expansion will quickly pay for itself and add additional revenues.
Yeah, just a couple of other points. That, that $5.3 million, that doesn't include the, when you get to the abutment of the bridge, it doesn't include the approach lanes into the customs import lot, so we'll probably add about another half a million dollars to that cost. Now, I have met with TechDOT. We have reviewed and gotten their comments on the schematic for this particular option. TechDOT is recommending the 15-mile-an-hour transition from the existing bridge into the new span. Originally, originally the cost, I believe, was like three, three and a half million dollars, but we're now using the latest, latest numbers that TechDOT has on their projects, and so it's gone up to this amount. Initially, TechDOT was going to give us up to 80%, which was three to four million dollars. So now that probably represents about 60 or 70%, but I think that's still open to negotiation. So a big percentage of this is going to be funded by TechDOT. What we'll do on, on, you know, building-
Pete, let me, let me ask you one question. In phase three, was the widening to the middle of the bridge, right? Yeah, we approved that, Judge. Well, we didn't approve, we didn't, well, we approved to TechDOT. It's a little bit different.
Yeah, I think the court gave us instructions, although it might not have been a vote, that, you know, ultimately, the court wants to do the entire, the entire bridge, the middle of the bridge.
Right.
We can take formal action.
Let me ask you, you've got a, I assume, an idea of a timeline that it would take to accomplish everything needed and the construction for what you're recommending, the 15 mile per hour, 622-foot length? Do you have a timeline on that? And, you know, to complete that?
Yeah, the design, you know, I think that can be done in about six months. Construction, probably nine months, because we're not going to interrupt the existing bridge. You know, all of it is, it's a new span. The only portion that requires some coordination is on the transition, but that work can be done at night.
So you're talking 15 months, say, a year and a half? And during that time, you'd also be working concurrently on trying to develop a complete bridge system?
Yeah. My other comment was going to be that in October, the bi-national meeting between the U.S. and Mexico is going to be held in Monterey, and we can make a formal presentation. I'll get with Mexico so that we can get them on board.
It is in October.
Don't have the exact date, but it's during the month of October. But we can make a joint presentation with ESSETE and, and just bring up and start the process at that time.
Well, I see this as a win-win situation, approving what you have before us now, because we're still going to go forward with the ultimate goal. So I make a motion that this be approved.
Second. The motion is to approve the recommended opt.
The recommended opt.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion, all will be prepared by sitting down.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you have 18 consideration and authorization to hold a public hearing where it's setting speed limit on Ted Hunt Road between FM 510 and FM 106 at 45 miles an hour? Is there a motion to go into public hearing?
Sommo.
Motion by Commissioner Wood.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Drax. Any further discussion, all will be prepared by sitting down.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're not in a public hearing. Any questions?
Judge, Commissioners, my name is Pete Tapola, Director of Department of Transportation. Our staff, our engineering staff went out and, using the TechDOT procedures, went out and engineering staff recommendation is that the speed limit be set at 45 miles an hour.
Past the curves.
Correct.
Okay. And I think you're, you're saying you're using TechDOT standards, which is they go out and they survey, if 80% of them are going extra miles, that's what they said.
That's what we do.
We could have picked up a little extra money had been constables out there giving each of these tickets, but that's-
We picked up a lot of money. That's why this issue came by.
Why we need to do it.
Right.
Now, tell me again the location, because I know I'll be getting phone calls.
It's between-
The location where you're going to put the sign?
Ted Hunt, between 510 and FM 106.
Just the curve.
Just the curve, right.
Just the curve. And the signage needs to be very clear.
That's the fee right there.
Yeah, very clear.
All right. Motion to close pu, anybody else want to say anything on this? Motion to close public hearing?
Sommo.
Second by Commissioner Drax. Any further discussion, all will be prepared by sitting down.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consideration approval resolution setting, speed limit on Ted Hunt Road between FM 510 and FM 106 at 45 miles an hour.
Sommo.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Wood. Second by Commissioner Drax. Any further discussion, all will be prepared by sitting down.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item number nine. Discussion regarding fiscal year 2006, 2007 budget and tax rate.
Oh, you want to, item number eight?
We're waiting for the rate.
Eight. Consideration authorization to hold a public hearing regarding proposed tax rates for 2006, 2007 fiscal year. He wants to go into public hearing by-
Second.
And for discussion, all will be prepared by sitting down.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're not in a public hearing.
Judge and Commissioners, the notice of the public hearing was published in both the Brownsville Herald and the Valley Morning Star on August the 20th, setting the public hearing dates for today, August 29th, and another public hearing to be held September 5th at approximately the same time here in the Commissioners' courtroom, notifying the public that the Commissioners' Court, I guess, maximum tax rate to be considered for the next fiscal year is the same as this fiscal year, which is .358191, and giving them an opportunity to voice their objection or consent to it.
Okay. We will incorporate Mr. Barrera's comments at the public, comment section into the record of the hearing so that he doesn't have to get up and all over again. So that's fine. Anybody else have a public comment?
No increase in taxes.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Paul. I am a Realtor with Century 21. And I would like to ask the court to please consider lowering the tax rate, because I'm curious to know that if, at the tax rate that you have now, property values having gone up as much as they have, I would be curious to know what difference that makes in what you're bringing in, in taxes, from last year, last year's property values versus these projected property values versus. I happen to know that yesterday I had a closing. The house sold for $75,000. Cameron County Appraisal District has it appraised at $88,000. Earlier this year, I sold a house in Harlingen, Palm Valley. That one was, I had it listed for $193,000 for the longest time. We lowered it to 179, we lowered it to 169, we lowered it to 159. It finally sold for 132 after many, many, almost a year. Cameron County Appraisal District has that one appraised at 169.9. I have a house that's a rental property. They raised my value from one year to the next because it borders, it's on Clubhouse Road. Clubhouse Road is not a fancy street. It's bordered by cheap houses. I hate to say it, I wish they weren't, it wasn't, but it is. On one side, it's bordered by some land that First National Bank bought. It's a lot of land that has a lot of book and cheap advantage, as well as a corner with Clubhouse, as well as a risaka. And that sold for, I think, $6 a square foot, or maybe $10 a square foot. I don't know. At any rate, they appraised my land at the same rate that the bank paid because it borders. I said, my land is a residential lot, and it has a deed restriction that says that it can only be a residential lot. They said, that doesn't matter. It borders this property, and this is what it's going to be. It took me two years for them to lower it. At first, the initial, the initial shock came when my house, my mortgage payment went up from $406 to $713 on a property that I rent for $500. Took me two years for them to finally adjust it, and I just got the rebate of my escrow because they finally saw the light, and my payment is now going to be $469. But the point that I'm trying to make is that you say that it's not going to impact people very much. The truth is that if you take the average household that you say it's going to go up $40 or $50 on the average household, average is the middle of the road. That means that if you divide below-average, average, and above-average values, that means that the average and the above-average, two-thirds of the people's taxes are going to go up, and they're going to go up quite a bit. Cameron County Appraisal District, I don't know what they're doing, but they're out of hand. And everybody, I read an article in the paper where you said that you didn't know what was going on, and you contacted them, Judge, because you want to know what's going on. What's going on is that they don't know how to evaluate properties. Next thing, I mean, I don't care really, it doesn't matter if they evaluate the property at $1 million. If it's only worth $100,000, it doesn't matter, as long as the tax rate is kept down enough that our tax doesn't go up. But with property values going up, even if you kept, even if you lowered the tax rate, I'd like to know what the effective tax rate would be for you to bring in the exact same amount of money that you brought in last year with today's values. That means you would have to lower your tax rate quite a bit, because the effective tax rate would have to come down quite a bit. But to make things equal, but between taxes going up, there's a lot, John Wood knows, there's a lot of people losing their houses because they can't afford their payments because their property taxes are too high. Everybody's taxes are going up because Cameron County Appraisal District seems to be out of control. Our utility bills are going up. Everything is going up. We need to give relief to the, to the people, and that's all I ask that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Judge, can I add something?
Sure.
She's correct. I get the same thing. They raised my taxes, and of course, I went over there and told them that I would even picket the plays there with my Uncle Sam uniform, and they kind of laughed and so forth, but they did drop it. But of course, they, they lowered, they lowered that much, they dropped it maybe half. So Barrera was satisfied, so I left. But that's what's happening, you know? The appraisal district is just, I don't know how they do it. I don't know about it. Mr. Gomez Fratoso probably knows about those things, but it's just affecting the people. And I understand there's a lot of people losing their property because of the high cost of a, and they say your house is worth more. Well, I didn't find any gold in my property. I didn't find, I don't have a swimming pool, and maybe a four or five blocks from there, they're building big homes, but what the hell's that got to do with mine, brother? See, that, it, it just doesn't make any sense. Of course, I'm not a real estate agent. I don't know about any of those things, but the only thing that I know that your money's just, you're paying more taxes for, for the same building that you have. And I fix up mine, and I want to do like Judge Gilbert Nogosa, his house real pretty and so forth. I want to keep mine real pretty and nice and neat and clean, and they probably say, Barrera, that house is worth more now. Well, it's just that I'm not moguoso, and I want to keep it nice and neat. Thank you, Judge.
Javier, would you give her a copy of the notice of the hearing on tax increase? The questions you asked us are all on here, the answers, okay? So if you were-
I'll make a copy.
Okay, you can have this.
Does that have the effective rate?
No. I'll list your copy of the, of the effective, the effective rate notice was published, I think it was on the 13th.
Yeah.
Let me ask, just to clarify, and I know I get phone calls almost every day from property owners that are really upset about this whole appraisal thing, and my office has been calling the appraisal office when people call, and we try to help make sure that people are heard. Sometimes they don't get their phone calls returned, and sometimes they're treated outright rude. But, you know, so we've been trying to see how we can help as much as possible and trying to get these folks to explain to us why they're doing it this way, and they give their explanation, and it just doesn't really make a lot of sense, to be honest with you. But, but notwithstanding the, there's, we understand what the effective tax rate is, but notwithstanding the increases, I think the most that the taxes can increase for, for property owners, I understand on the average is 8%, right? If it goes up to that, how does that work?
I'm counting about the appraisal district. I think they're at the 10%. It's at 10%.
10%. 10%. So they can't go beyond the 10% number, but what about the taxes? Can your, can your, your taxes can increase beyond that 10% of the county tax?
The county tax, each entity, of course, it's cumulative in total. It's, it's not for everyone. Each entity has the maximum that they can increase it before it goes over, say, the rollback rate.
Right.
Which is calculated, they say it's 8%, but there is a factor in there for additional debt. If an entity issues additional debt, then that pushes the rollback rate actually a little bit higher, and sometimes it's higher than the 8%.
That doesn't apply to us.
Correct.
But some of the school districts it does.
Yeah, they did issue-
Well, the college recently increased theirs by 30%, I think, and I think this year, because of the bond issue that went, that was passed, but I think now at, at their budget hearing right now, that's going on now, they're going to reduce it a little bit. But they've already increased last year an extra nickel to 16 cents. Reduce it down a little bit. Those are, like you're talking about, those are the ones that are approved by the voters in bond issues.
I think all of us have been, have been contacted numerous times. I know I've gotten almost, at least on a weekly basis, emails from people, and all I can do is call the appraisal district, as your office does, and, and I ask them to give me feedback as to if they responded to them, if they set up an appointment for them and so on. Sometimes they're slow about doing that, so I call again.
Judge, how are the members on the appraisal board, you know, the loose sections where they, you go to protest, how are those people selected to be there?
The board members?
Yes, sir.
The, all the taxing entities have representatives on that. Some of the small cities elect a representative together.
And school districts.
But, but, and school districts, but like, for example, we have one, one appointment, and it's a public member.
The larger entities like BISD, City of Harlingen, City of Brownsville, Cameron County, I know all those have one representative, and then some of the smaller school districts get together and select one, and some of the smaller communities-
And I promise you, I have called our board member and said, what in the hell are y'all doing? And I got the same exact response that Fratoso gave when he came over here on the day that he, that he, that he spoke, and, you know, just, it's not-
They're, they're following state guidelines.
Yeah, well, and, and-
He's talking about the review board.
Yeah, the review board.
I don't know that.
They're chosen from, their board members make that decision who's going to serve on the review board.
The board members of the appraisal district.
Because Earl Tylen, the attorney, I've seen him there 30 or 4 years, the same person.
They have limits, they have limits as to how long they can turn, yes, sir? He's on the-
I take it he's served. You've served.
I've served probably eight or nine years on that one. Not anymore, though.
You're staying away from that.
State guidelines is what they operate out of.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's a comptroller's office that kinda keeps them where they're at.
The comptroller's office audits them regularly. They were auditing them this spring, I know.
Yeah.
On how they have their values set.
Okay. Well, we're doing everything we can to try to get this tax rate as low as we can get it, and we just, I mean, I've been dealing with Javier, and it's, you know, our problem is that as we go in the fiscal year, we add, there's things that come up. We hired, we added about eight hundred thousand dollars, or how much was it, to the DA's office?
Six hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Six hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, this is last year, to the DA's office that we, that was not budgeted last year. And we've added, you know, jailers, and we've added people up and down the line. And so at the end of the year, the budget that we had for the preceding fiscal year won't hold the new positions. The taxes that we generate, we have to generate more taxes to pay for the new positions that have been created, and it's really hard to tell the DA no when, for example, he's giving you, he's asking for assistant district attorneys and investigators and people to handle the increased crime load, the sheriff department, all the, we approved several law enforcement positions, and then the increase in gas prices, and that increases utility prices, and I don't know what's in. So all of that was not originally budgeted, and we have to add it to.
The law enforcement sector of the budget for Cameron County, I believe encompasses about sixty percent of our budget, and that's from constables, JP, sheriffs, courts, DA's office. The balance is what we have to offer the county on, and maintain the roads and do the other things that the county's required to do, and the health department, the other departments that are out there.
I think she has it.
Yes, I have.
She has an additional comment.
I have another comment. I'm just looking at this sheet that they handed me, and the total taxable value of property has gone up close to a billion dollars. A billion dollars. Close to thirty dollars of the total taxable value of all property. The total taxable value of all new property that people are not getting taxes from last year is three hundred and thirty-seven point nine million dollars worth of property. So that's gonna generate more income for them. Not only that, the law enforcement community gets a lot of money from the work that they do. They, I mean, the man who's just here says that a lot of their budget, they have money budgeted from where they confiscate money and get money from that place. So also, we need to keep in mind that it's not just the county taxes going up, the ISB's going up, city, navigation district, everybody's going up, taxes, and people are gonna have to go to pay more. You're gonna need to be aware of all of the other taxes, because the guard taxes are just going up, four hundred dollars, well, that's easy. But it's not four hundred dollars. It's forty-nine years before there, and people can't afford that. And I think that if we need to tighten our belts individually, I think the county needs to tighten, and there is a lot of ways in the county and city, and in every, every place there's a lot of ways. People don't, are not asked to tighten their belts, they're not going to. But one million dollars or close to a billion dollars of additional value of property should bring in, generate enough taxes that, and with the new tax, the new taxable value on the new property, three hundred and thirty-seven million dollars in particular, that income is gonna be income that you can have last year, and you're gonna have it this year, and we need to work.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Right. There's a motion to close public hearing, it's a second.
Second.
By Commissioner Tamari for discussion, all those in favor, say a no.
Aye.
Nine, consideration, discussion regarding the fiscal year 2006, 2007 fiscal budget and tax rate.
Judge and commissioners, there's not a whole lot of change from last week. The proposed budget was filed with accounting charts for the public inspection. There'll be a notice to run September the third notifying the public of a public hearing regarding the budget set for September the 12th, 2006. Still working with the auditor as far as on the finalization of other revenues, non-tax revenues, trying to get to the three percent possibly living increase, and then any additional funds that may be available for requests by the various county departments.
So you don't have another handout after this?
No, it's the same. Nothing has changed.
Nothing changed.
You haven't found any of the three forty-eight yet?
No, not yet.
The number at the jail is how many?
This morning, it was two.
Still two fifty?
No, it was two seventy-eight.
No, the number that we're using.
Oh, yes, certified, it's still two fifty.
Two fifty.
Yes.
And the number today was what?
Two seventy-eight.
Is it going up or staying stable?
It's going, it's gone up since then. It had gone to two seventy-one, then it went back down to two sixty-five or something, and today it's to two seventy-eight last week. So it's essentially in its way up, just not steady, just up and down, up and down. But, yeah, we're still at two fifty at the present time. We're still waiting on SCAP.
There was an article on that the other day about why we had lost some of our federal inmates, and an interesting headline on the article. I don't think that was characterized very accurate as to why we lost our federal inmates. The reason we lost our federal inmates was because we have the jail overcrowded at the time that the State Jail Standards Commission came by, because we just had too many inmates. And they, they told us we needed to decrease our population, and so the only way we could decrease our population was by decreasing, we went through the jail and got out as many people as we could, but we had to decrease our federal inmate populations because of the overcrowding. It had nothing to do with anything else, to be honest with you, that I understand, and I know that, because I was talking to Mike and the sheriff, and, you know, we were in discussions, and we were in a jam because we had too many inmates in the jail at that time, and we needed to get them moved through there as quickly as possible. And that was the sole reason why the U.S. Marshals Office went from close to five hundred inmates down to two hundred. No other reason, no, no other reason. I just wish people would be a little bit more careful when they report these things. Okay. So as it stands right now, and this is a question, maybe it's out of order, but as we stand at the jail right now, we have how many vacancies in beds?
No, they do have, I imagine it's a hundred and...
What?
I'd have to check. It's a hundred and something, it's a hundred.
You got Gus on the... A hundred? So we can bring in another hundred inmates? Or is that...
That takes in...
We speak at this time, okay? We talk to the fellows, and we talk to the people from the Bureau of Prisons, and they're waiting to come and really fill up some of the beds.
Okay.
Who's got the number?
Judge, the latest report I have is from the 26th, and at that time, of the thirteen hundred ninety of our total capacity, there were one thousand two hundred and seventy-five in the facility.
About a hundred. But aren't we required to keep a vacancy factor in...
Well, the sheriff's got, got that kinda taken care of.
We took care of it last time. We had a meeting, the commission jail standards, and they're not, because we have requested to set up some tents, so in essence, they say, "Well, we can..."
Wave the vacancy factor.
Five percent. And eventually, we told them, "We'll be able to have maybe about fifteen to twenty empty beds," and they agreed to that. So where you comply is five percent of this time.
Okay. Thank you, Judge.
It's twelve ninety-two today.
Twelve ninety-two.
One thousand two hundred and ninety-two today.
And that's really important, because, and that's, we got the jail space, we should fill it. I mean, you know, why keep open ten, how many percent, whatever? Just get them in there, you know, and we'll clear ours. That's why it's so critical for us to move quickly on this annex that the sheriff is proposing, because it's gonna give us, what, how many beds are they proposing with that chair?
Eighty-six.
About three hundred and thirty-four beds.
Three hundred for the warehouse.
Three hundred and thirty-four.
I mean, we can make a lot of room in our jail for the federal inmates once we get that thing built, and that's why we've got it on a fast track, and that's why this whole issue with respect to the construction manager at risk is so important, that we can just go forward, get it done, get our trustees and our medium-security inmates in there and make more room for federal inmates. What's the timeline on the construction on that that they give us? Do you remember?
It, once we get going on that, according to Mr. Burns, they have about eight to nine months, which is pretty reasonable time. It's going back, that's pretty fast. Also, I have a little note here, and we'll just read it from the paper, the L O, the previous individual, what's his name, some fellow? We're looking at something that is gonna be pretty feasible as far as concerned, as far as the money's concerned here for the county, but for a particular jail over there, just because the one they're proposing, I'm working right now, for fifty-five beds is almost five million dollars. That's fifty-five beds compared to what we're proposing, three hundred and thirty-four beds, and it'd be approximate at the same time. There's another guy that, you remember his name?
Presory.
Huh?
Presory.
Presory. Nine hundred beds, and the sheriff's office, expensive, eighty-five million dollars. Eighty-five million dollars.
You're doing it for how much?
We don't know.
Well, probably it's gonna be five or six million.
About six million, what we're told.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Do I hear a motion to acknowledge...
Second.
...for discussion, all those in favor, say a no.
Aye.
Ten, consideration, not for the whole public hearing, but understanding of election for the salary for 2006, 2007 fiscal year. Move to go into hearing.
I want you to go into public hearing, like, which you have asked, second by Commissioner Tamari, signature, all those in favor, say a no.
Judge and commissioners, the actual notice was actually attached to item number eleven that ran in the newspaper, advertising the maximum compensation to be considered by the commissioner's court for elected officials at a cost of living increase of three percent to each individual elected official, setting the public hearing for this morning, giving the positive opportunity to make comments.
Anybody wish to comment on any of those items? The only thing I was gonna mention was, last year, Judge Wise grieved his travel allowance, and then it was converted to a grievance on his salary, and he got an increase of eight hundred dollars or something like that. How much was it?
Eight hundred dollars.
Eight hundred dollars. So what you have today is you have one JP making eight hundred dollars more than anybody else. And I understand that all the JPs are gonna grieve that one issue if we don't adopt a uniform salary for everyone. And that also affects the constables, because the constables get the same base salary as JPs, and so now, if they grieve, if the JPs grieve, then the constables, and the constables don't grieve, you're gonna have a difference in salary if the grievance committee approves the additional eight hundred dollars to even, I don't know what y'all wanna do on that, or just leave it at the three percent, or... But that's out there, and that's a problem, and I don't know how, I don't know how to deal with it other than... Well, the easy way to fix it is let them grieve.
We'll have to prepare ourselves for it.
Yeah. 'Cause I think that they, the constables and the JPs should make the exact same salary. Same base salary. Okay, any other questions? Any other comments? I want you to close public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Tamari, second motion for discussion, all those in favor, say a no.
Aye.
And item number eleven, consideration action regarding the setting of elected officials' compensation.
Judge and commissioners, the attached list shows the three percent increase, the maximum considered by the court. The action would allow, would commence the, if the elected official chooses, to submit a grievance, and then for us to notify the grievance committee and set the hearing date for September the 12th is when they would meet and then make their recommendations to the commissioner's court.
Is the three percent, the district judges came last week and made a proposal that said that they were authorized to get another rate of ten thousand dollars, and is the three percent across the board that is part of this public hearing and ultimately the action, does that include them or not?
No. In the past, it has always been my understanding in previous legal that because they are courts of record, they do not fall under the grievance procedure.
That's not what I, wow, okay.
Yeah, he wouldn't, they wouldn't go into this notice, and their salaries could be, if there was a decision by the court to afford them those monies that they're asking for, it doesn't go through this process. They can be done at a later time. It can be done at a later time, because they wouldn't have the ability to grieve.
So, but when you're, the setting of number, of the salary on number eleven, does that include the district judges or not?
No, because they are, they are not listed in the public hearing and in the notice.
They're requesting ninety-six hundred dollar increase.
I know that.
You can, you can elect to include a three percent increase.
You would figure that that's what we would do. I would think that's what we'd do, in all fairness to all the county employees. All right. Move to close public hearing, did we already do that? So...
Did you have anything else to add? Oh, I apologize, I thought we were...
This was...
We're on the next one.
Yeah.
That's actually...
Yeah, we've done ten already.
Okay. Eleven, consideration action regarding the setting of elected officials' compensation. So do I hear a motion in that?
Second.
Three percent.
Now, maximum three percent.
Three percent.
Motion by Commissioner Vasquez, second by Commissioner Tamari for discussion, all those in favor, say a no.
Aye.
Okay.
Fourteen, Your Honor, you haven't, you haven't done fourteen yet.
Fourteen?
We're near fourteen.
Fourteen or fourteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
And Oklahoma, fourteen, all right?
Fourteen. We're gonna do fourteen now. Like Dable says, we're gonna talk howdy-talk now. Four, consideration possible action regarding order adopting changes to Dune Protection Plan. Is that your deal?
That's Javier Mendez, but I, Judge, I've talked with the counsel for the GLO, T.R. Thompson, and on August fourth, he, we emailed back and forth an order that they, they've approved, which is the order that's before you, and he specified that he wanted attached to that the amended, the amended plan, dunes, beach and dune protection plan, which is attached to the original that has been given to the clerk. That was modified in accordance with the changes, and the changes in the order, there are two, basically. One is the, the sit back, or I'll call it a sit back, it's from the, our, the county, in the current dune and, or beach protection, dune protection act, the sit back requirement is greater than the state requires. And while we're amending to conform to the state requirements for the sit back from the line of vegetation, and then we're also amending to conform our, our charges at the gates to what we're actually charging, and that's the two changes, basically.
All right. Do I hear a motion to that effect on the Dune Protection Plan? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So you've reviewed it?
I've reviewed the order, and the order is precisely what, what the counsel for the GLO wanted it to be. Javier Mendez has prepared the attachment, and it is attached. I have not reviewed it.
Is this the attachment?
Yes, that's the attachment.
This is the attachment to the order?
Yes.
But the...
The order just, the order's just two pages.
Right, no, the order I had seen, but everything that was behind it is what... Is what the GLO wants?
Exactly.
The reason that you got the attachment, that GLO said, "Well, you need to attach that stuff to the order for us to be able to accept the order that you approved." And I've been, that's what they told us when we had that meeting up there in Austin with, with Commissioner Patterson. with, with Commissioner Patterson.
And I've been emailing to them the correspondence back and forth on the language.
And we're going to be able to institute all these recommendations and requests that they have into our operations out there without significant problems.
Right. And I've already sent them the report, our financial report, and they're reviewing it. They had a few comments, but I think Isabel's going to be down here tomorrow and bring those comments with her.
So, Javier, what you did, I see, and this is what you just gave us, where you've deleted certain sections, that was for the purpose of complying with the...
Correct. What I did was, I striked out the, on that plan, all the, whatever we deleted, and whatever is italicized is what we changed.
Yeah.
What was amended?
Like vehicular beaches, you took all that out?
Yeah.
Well, I changed it. I, I replaced it with new text.
What would the new one be?
It's, uh...
It's on D, page nine.
One, two.
It looks like it's just deleted total.
On page four, uh, since vehicular beaches, all that's italicized, I, what we did was, we had to show what, where we had our, our beach access.
Well, I, I can save some time. It's, it's on page four, David, and where it's showing that it's deleted is, is page nine.
Right.
Okay, but I was looking at beach access number seven, page nine.
Yeah, beach access number seven is Boca Chica, uh, which I didn't get a photo of, but it's, it describes it in there.
Okay, it's described in the packet.
Right.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Would that be subject to legal or, I mean, do you need to look at it?
I reviewed the order.
You reviewed the order.
Okay, the order. As far as the attachment, Mr. Mendez has been coordinating with them.
Okay, they want.
Yeah, so as long as, he'll, he's going to make sure, we'll hold him accountable for that. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tomlinson, second by Commissioner Graftson, for discussion, all those in favor, it's not by Stephen I.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, is that it on the action items?
Yes.
Item 20.
We already hit the travel.
36. Any questions concerning...
You know, I have one question, Judge, on 28. How does the order we just approved impact number 28, Javier?
Mr. Guards also, I want to say, the, I wanted to announce on 28, we haven't had, Mr. Guard, we haven't had a chance to, the legal has not had a chance to review item 28, so that would have to be approved, if approved, subject to legal's review.
Can we table that for you to do now?
You want to table?
You need it by today.
You need this.
Number 28 on the consent items?
I don't recall what, I think we still have time, if you all want to table it.
Yeah, let's table it. Let's look at it.
Make sure it complies with what we just adopted, okay?
Oh, it does. What we did was, we had this last year, and they're just having it again.
Yeah, but last year, we didn't have the same rules that we just approved.
We've changed the rules now.
Okay. Any other questions?
Move to table 28.
25. Uh, consideration approved for the October 1, 2006, 2007, September 30, 2007 holiday schedule.
I think one thing I noticed on the schedule that is put before us, when you come to January 2nd, 2007, instead of Monday, that's actually a Tuesday. And we have that Tuesday after the first, and then if we back up to Christmas Day, Christmas, I guess, falls on a, on a Monday, and, uh, they're looking at also having a Tuesday off. I personally don't see any reason to have Tuesday off on either of those two weeks.
Okay, John, can you, can you go back again?
Go back to that again.
I mean, on the schedule attached.
Go from the holiday and compare it to the day.
Look at the days observed.
Okay.
Christmas Day.
For Christmas, December, yeah, for Christmas, December 25th, which is a Monday, and December 26th, which is a Tuesday.
Okay, I got that.
They're going to be off on Friday, Saturday, I'm sorry, not Friday, on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, and they're proposing off also on Tuesday.
Why was that done?
I don't know.
Excuse me. Good morning, Commissioner, Judge. It falls on a Monday and a Tuesday, that's why we went ahead and recommended Monday and Tuesday.
But it falls, Christmas falls on Monday, not Tuesday.
Well, do we take off on Christmas Eve?
Well, we usually take the 26th and the 25th.
This is the day after Christmas.
Usually, it's the 24th and 25th are the two days that the county closes, observe.
Normally.
Depends on what, when it falls. Sometimes it falls on a, on a Saturday, and we've taken off Friday and Monday, which doesn't, didn't make any sense, and I voted against those also, I think.
Well, it allows people to travel back on the 25th to be, you know, and spend the whole day with your families, another consideration for if I want to take.
And the same falls into the next one, New Year's Day, which really, January the 1st is a Monday, January the 2nd is a Tuesday, and they're asking for Tuesday off.
What, they need a day to get over the hangover?
I think that's just the, I think that's just the...
Tradition, huh?
I think we ought to take the days off that we observed, which is Christmas Day and New Year's Day, and come back the following day, which would be Tuesday.
Well, I hate to take that, I hate to take the Christmas.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to mess with the 26th.
You know, Christmas, I feel like we need to give them, yeah.
But the Tuesday after the first, I'm not sure what the logic is there.
The same logic as the Tuesday after Christmas, that's the logic, you know?
Yeah, but the holidays is different.
There might be some, I think with the personnel policies, have a certain number of vacation days that are provided, and I think that the Personnel Department is probably just accommodating that number, the numbers, the certain days that are observed, and if the day falls within the weekend, that you take the next Monday off is what...
The personnel policy doesn't, I mean, that, that changes every year when we approve the holiday schedule, doesn't it?
The number changes all the time.
Yes, it does. But if it falls on a Sunday, then we honor it on a Monday. If it falls on a Saturday, we honor it on a Friday.
Right. What we did, for example, last year at Christmas, we had Friday, the...
We had Friday and Monday.
23rd, Saturday, the 24th, Christmas Day, the 25th, and Monday, the 26th.
But, but John, they get the weekend, whether it's Christmas or not.
Right.
Wouldn't you agree we need the second?
What do we need the day after Christmas for, is my point?
The 26th should be a workday if it's Tuesday.
If it's Tuesday.
Yeah, I can, I can see the, the New Year's, but on Christmas, I, I don't know, John, and I can understand, I can see both sides, but you know, as I see the employees that I'm around, you know, they, in my opinion, Christmas is a very special holiday, and, and I hate to take away the two days, whether, whatever, whichever way it falls, I feel, you know, I'm, I'm forgiving them at least those two days.
So, you want to knock out the Tuesday on the 2nd, right?
Yeah, I don't mind the New Year's, but, but not Christmas.
So, what's the total number you're proposing here, as presented, 14?
14 days.
14.
So, would it go down to 13?
Well, would you recommend Friday and Monday, or just Monday?
Right, what?
Well, well, for the two days, or just...
No, I'm talking about Christmas.
Yeah, for Christmas.
Good, I, I don't have a problem with doing the 25th and the 26th.
Yeah.
What I do, I think John's right, I agree with John on the 2nd, because we've always worked on the 2nd.
The day after.
The day after the 1st, and that's always been the case.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, but...
And I think what you're right, the personal problem, trying to get to the 14 number, but it's not so much the number, it's the...
Significant.
The appropriate holidays under the circumstance. Okay, um, all right, so...
So, the 2nd, the 2nd is on the...
On a Tuesday.
The 2nd is really Tuesday.
Is that right? I mean, are you sure about that?
According to my calendar.
The 1st is on a Sunday.
The 1st is on a Sunday. I, according to what I have, I have January the 2nd as Monday.
January 07, Monday, looks like.
It's on a Monday.
Monday?
It looks like there.
07.
That's why.
Yeah, January 07 is on a Monday.
Falls on the same day Christmas falls on, the same day of the week. If Christmas the 25th falls on Monday, January the 1st falls on Monday.
So, the 2nd is Tuesday.
It's what his calendar says, unless it's wrong.
So, then, are you saying we're observing New Year's Day on the Monday?
On Monday.
New Year's Day is on Monday.
It is on Monday.
So, that was where the...
That's where the error was. She thought it was Sunday, so she wanted to give the holiday, the personnel wanted to give the holiday of the 1st.
January 2nd is Tuesday.
They gave it on a Monday, so there's no reason to do the Tuesday.
Right.
Okay, well...
I'm fine with that.
Okay, do I hear a motion to that effect? And we do that, all the holidays recommended except for January 2nd.
And you just, you just observed that on January 1st, is what I'm saying.
That's the 1st of January.
Right, the day you observe the New Year's Day.
A New Year's Day.
Right, so when they put January 2nd, they should have put January 1st, so the number of days doesn't change.
No, they want it Tuesday.
No, they're asking for...
They're asking for the 2nd.
No, but what he's saying here is that, it says days observed, it's on the right-hand side, it said January 2nd, but it was intended to say January 1st.
January 1st.
Yes. They were asking for an additional day.
So, they were only asking for 13?
No, they were asking for 14.
They really, they really wanted the 2nd.
January 1st being one of them.
Yes.
So, the 2 is wrong, or the Monday's wrong underneath it.
The Monday's wrong.
But the Monday's right.
So, we're saying, Monday's right.
Monday's wrong. It's January the 1st on a Monday.
Yeah.
Who's on 1st? Do I hear a motion to approve the holidays with the amendment to January 1 from January 2?
Second.
I've made a motion.
There's a motion in the second meeting for discussion, all those in favor, it's not by Stephen I.
Aye.
Neither.
I just feel like our employees really deserve that, and, and I, you know, I know some of you are sitting out there, and I, and I'm the first to get on your case if something isn't getting done, and so on, but I'm just trying to be fair. I think, I think that the employees deserve those two days, and I'm conservative about a lot of things, but I think that this is the least we can do for them.
If I may address the court, I've been notified of action taken in Hidalgo County concerning the Rio Grande Valley Health Services District. I received a call from Colonel Carr.
Is this on the agenda? He's just making an announcement.
I'm making announcements for no activity for you to take, but to notify you as a board, that because y'all have appointees who represent Cameron County, says the Hidalgo County Commissioners' Court voted 3 to 2 to withdraw from the Rio Grande Valley Health Services District. Sylvia Handy and the county judge voted to continue.
Thank you.
Well, the majority rules, right?
Yeah.
Their laws. They're, they're paying twice as much per patient than we are, and they still want to continue to do that, that sort of argument.
Well, their tax rate's almost twice what ours is. I guess they can afford it, and they can.
Okay.
Does that mean that we get a windfall now of what we've paid into?
Well, we have to figure out what we're going to do, but we don't have this on the agenda.
I just thought I, I just thought I'd throw that out, you know? Another announcement, Judge.
I'll have an item on the agenda that comes to the spot. All right, on consent items, any other questions on 22, 36?
Can we keep all of the...
You have a table 28.
Table 28.
28.
Motion to approve 20 to 20, uh, to 36, and with the amendment to the holidays.
Well, we did that one.
So moved, Judge.
Second.
Table, we're already, hey, motion by Commissioner Graftson, second by Commissioner Tomlinson, for discussion, all those in favor, it's not by Stephen I.
Aye.
Motion to go on executive session.
Sommo. Second.
Commissioner Tomlinson, second by Commissioner Graftson, for discussion, all those in favor, it's not by Stephen I.
Aye.
Okay. Sheriff?
Item number 39A, possible action on confirmed Commissioners' Court, legal conflict concerning issues related to possible acquisition of real property for the dancing building renovation project, motion to table.
There was no discussion.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, second by Commissioner Tomlinson, for discussion, all those in favor, it's not by Stephen I.
Aye.
Motion carries. 39B, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of right-of-way for the Westwell Project, motion to...
I make a motion that our, Pete's a pull to go forward, the counter offer to text off for their consideration.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Tomlinson, for discussion, all those in favor, it's not by Stephen I.
Aye.
Motion carries. 39C, possible action on confirmed Commissioners' Court, legal conflict concerning Red River Solid Waste Collection contract, blah, 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 motion to table.
Sommo.
Motion by Commissioner, um, well, let me, I shouldn't say blah, blah.
She got that.
Possible action on...
I'm glad you took care of that.
Concerning Red River Solid Waste Collection contract about issue of non-compliance or default on the matter which is due to the attorney general, attorney to governmental body, and taking disciplinary rules, professional conduct to the, of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Motion to table.
I, I'm abstaining.
Second by Commissioner Tomlinson, for discussion, all those in favor, it's not by Stephen I.
I, I'm abstaining.
She wasn't in there.
Okay, well, you can't do anything.
She was absent at the time.
Here he comes.
You want to second the motion to table on Red River, David?
Sure.
All right. All those in favor, it's not by Stephen I. I have a motion carries.